Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. May I please have a motion for an approval of minutes of the meetings held February 27th and 28th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Person wishing to address the school board? Mary will have you down on topic. Is there anybody else? Better give us your name and address.
That's right. Jason Ball. I am the new president of the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. My new address is 723 East 21st Street, and I'm still working on details like that. I am here tonight to just introduce myself to the school board, indicate how excited I am to be in this community, thrilled that I get to work with the school district, which is so, so well regarded in this community. I can tell you, it was such a selling point for my family and I. I have a one-year-old and a four-year-old. I am trying to prepare for your system soon, and time is moving too quickly with the four-year-old. I need more time to get him ready. But thrilled to be part of this community. As a key contact point for the business community, I want to do everything I can to make sure the chamber is being responsible to the needs of our school district and our education system in general. I am thrilled to get to work with someone who spent so much time in Nebraska with Dr. Maher. Go Huskers. I spent 16 years working for various companies in Lincoln, Nebraska, prior to coming here with a short four-year stint in Kansas prior to this. So I don't know if this is the proper time. I'm very happy to answer questions if you have any. Otherwise, I will look forward to connecting with each of you individually as I continue to do introductory meetings with other community leaders.
Great. Thanks for being here, and we're excited to have you in Sioux Falls.
You bet. Thank you very much.
We'll get you some coyote wear very shortly.
Very good. I've had a lot of offers for the appropriate attire sporting-wise recently, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. Deanne, good news report.
Well, we may have just alluded to this, but we're deep into the throes of basketball's March Madness, but other teams are also notching some big wins and bringing home awards for the Sioux Falls School District. The Washington High School Oral Interp program did very well at national qualifiers recently, and their head coach, Michelle McIntyre, is here to tell us about the accomplishments of students, and also will have a performance by one of those students. So I will invite Michelle.
Thank you. At the Washington High School Oral Interp team, we have saw some really great successes this year. Everything from winning major awards at pretty much every tournament that we attended this year, with a lot of newcomers to the team who have great talent. We also were proud to win our third consecutive Team of Excellence Award at the state level this year, and a most recent accomplishment that we've had is that we have qualified to go to the national tournament in Birmingham, Alabama this June, which ends a 17-year hiatus for us at that event. So we're really pretty excited to get a chance to go down and show the talent that Washington students have. Our student that's with us here tonight, Maddie Morgan, was that qualifier, and she won first place across our regional district to earn that honor to get to go represent us at nationals. And she has a piece in the humor category that she's going to share with you tonight that deals with a very serious subject that many, many young people deal with, and that is high school breakups. So Maddie?
Some of my bad first memories are of my parents fighting.
$200? What is wrong with you?
But that's what they lost.
I could make you a purse for $200.
Oh, sure, like Dad's gonna cash in. Dad would apply to getting off the couch and turning off the television.
The couch is nicer than even you ever ran.
And that's when I stopped leaving in love. My mom ended up dating a series of guys, but this isn't a play about her. Okay, so it is a little bit, but mostly it's about me and this guy. That's Brendan. I'm Brendan. Did you know that the largest volcanic eruption in the world is from Mount Pandora? Would probably speed like 13 bajillion feet high in the air. Okay, so more like 13,000 feet high, but I mean, just imagine all that lava killing millions, boys, girls, couples! Unless, you know, the couples had already broken up and speeded their hat, made the guts all over the place, you feel me? Aye, and I'm a you. Get it? I just like the way it is. Anyways, I bet Jasmine could relate to this magnificent explosion in "The Staggering Heartbreak of Jasmine Meriwether" by Dawn Silas. I can think for the exact moment in time that I fell in love with Brendan. AP Biology class, ten o'clock, a.m. I think it's a very important day in AP Biology class, dude. The person you were before today is dead, and the person you are waiting to become is wriggling inside his birthday act, waiting to emerge, kicking and screaming into the light, yeah! Today we dissect a regional tick. Partner. Hey, so I was wondering you wanted to be torturers. I gotta warn you, I'm gonna be torturing for the majority of the time during this project. That's okay. I can do all the girl stuff. You can do all the computer stuff. Ding ding! That's what happened. Maybe now you could come over to my place and we could type the following part. I'm dying. And I could buy some sensitive candles. I'm dying. And I'll rub your shoulders when you get there, 'cause my fingers are strong. Strong as my soul. I'm kidding. I can read myself in those eyes. Our project was 19 days late, given our went over to his house every night. Oh, my gosh! Are you still working on that AP Biology thing? Yes, Mother, it requires a lot of time and energy and... Falling in love is difficult to describe, so I will now show you what it's like to fall in love through interpretive... Five, six, seven, eight. Does he like me? Does he like me? I'm not sure that he likes me. I'm freaking out. He's so cute. And we're gonna marry and have three kids. One, two, three! Let me get a one-piece stretch of pants. He's gonna love my stretch of pants. I could create a swimming pool filled with marsh and melon. And you and me could eat all the rum and wine and pussy sandwiches. I love you. I'm the happiest person in the whole universe. There was no one in the history of everyone felt like this before. It was kind of like that. Dear diary, day 46, here is a friend who... Oh, my gosh! Why, what is this stranger doing in my daughter's room? Nothing, Mom! Nothing? I got you something! The 10 stupid things women do to screw up their life. Why are you trying to tell me something? That's the book, not me! Well, I'm probably not doing any of these 10 things. Okay, no, I'm joking. Yeah, Mom, I'm not talking to you. This book was probably made for cheerleaders in the 1950s or something, trying to find themselves deep down their soul. So it turns out I was doing one, two, three, nine through 10, but like, whatever. In life with Brendan. You know what's strange about... Everything. Just think, if it weren't for that AP Biology class, we never would have found each other. Because I guess love, you know? Well, I mean, nothing's love, but I love you. Okay, Jasmine, listen. No, 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 I'm rushing things. I'm rushing things. I should not have said that so soon. I'm being stupid. I'm being dumb, right? And you're probably like, "Well, girlfriend's freaking out." But I'm not freaking out. Okay, okay, so I'm freaking out a little bit. And I am a squirrel, so I'm racing up the tree, and I'm like... And I'm gonna hop up the tree, and I'm hiding. I'm dashing. I'm jumping. I'm like, "Get in the tree, get in the tree, get in the tree!" It's your slop. You're sitting there, and you're like... I guess it's running down there and get you, but you twist me, and I die a dead squirrel, because you're sitting there, and you're eating like a slop eater. You're sitting there, and you're like... Shut up! I should shut up. I mean, in trouble? Like, I thought we were not in trouble. Listen, Jasmine, I like you. I do. Really, there's no reason why to say this, but I think we should break up. Okay, you know that saying that's like, rip the band-aid off? Yeah, doing that right now. Well, I respect your opinion, but I think that's very stupid. I'm sorry, you know, if you would have waited a little while longer to break up with me, we could have like, made out for a while. Oh, I know. But like, I didn't think that was like, fair. Like, you know? If it's ladies and gentlemen, is what it felt like inside. Walking on sunshine, ooh! Don't say a good hit! So I did the only thing I thought I could do. Never mind, I'm so tired! Sweetheart, honey, you've been singing that song now for the last nine years! It is mine. I'm wallowing! If you could just leave a couple of chunks of ice cream outside the door, that would be great, because like... Ice cream's not gonna leave you, you know? Ice cream's not gonna be like... It's gonna be like... Well, this is true, this is true. Unless it melts. Okay, sweetie, I think you need to have a talk. Okay, okay, listen here now. Think of it this way: if there was only one perfect guy out there for you, well, you'd have three and a half billion chances to find him, what? If there are three and a half billion guys, I'm sure you've got a chance out there somewhere. You're saying I should hook up with a million guys? No, no, Dad, it's not what I'm saying, no! I think I need to know how to send... Plastic surgery! I can deal with Dad. Do you feel better? Something a little out of my mind. Well, Mom, mostly I'm still miserable! You are only busy for a little while, okay? Yes, sweetheart. Do you think I'll ever fall in love again? I shall hope so. Me too.
Wow. Wish I had that much energy. Thank you, Maddie. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Best wishes on the next competition. I know you'll represent South Dakota well and Washington High School, and have a great time, good learning experience, too.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed? Hearing none. We'll move forward. Can I get an approval of the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Need a motion to accept the supplement consent agenda 9A claims to Sanford Health Care.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion's carried with an abstention from Board Member Ryder. And on to the reports of the superintendent.
Our first report tonight is the English Language Arts Curriculum Report, and here to present that is Director of Curriculum Instruction Anne Smith.
Good evening. While the English Language Arts curriculum might prepare our students for a presentation like Maddie just gave, the curriculum director will not give it in the same state.
Come on, Anne.
The process for adopting a new curriculum, like the English Language Arts curriculum, begins with a steering committee. Steering committee has representation from stakeholders, all the different stakeholders of our district. The steering committee held six meetings between September and March of 2017, and the purpose of the steering committee is to review the standards, assessment data research, and best practice methodology, and from that to write the program mission, vision, and goals, which guide the work for the instructional level committees. Then the instructional level committees start, elementary, middle, and high school. Actually, they start after about the second meeting of the steering committee. They began their monthly meetings beginning in December of 2015, and included on those instructional level committees are over 200 classroom teachers, special education teachers, English language learner teachers, and librarians. So the vision that came to the instructional level committee from the steering committee was to be sure that whatever curriculum we adopt will inspire our students to become lifelong readers, competent writers, confident speakers, and critical listeners. Our mission is to educate and prepare each student to succeed in a changing world, and to do that, we will create a community of learners engaged in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. The goals for our curriculum: as our students advance in their education and their mastery of reading, writing, speaking, listening, and language standards, they will be able to exhibit more fully and consistently the capacities of the literate individual. To that end, they will demonstrate independence, build strong content knowledge, respond to the varying demands of audience, task, purpose, and academic discipline; they will comprehend as well as critique; they will be able to find, evaluate, and use evidence; they will use technology and digital media strategically and capably; and they will come to understand other perspectives and cultures. The outcome of the study is that we have developed a curriculum and pacing guides that are fully aligned with the most current South Dakota English Language Arts standards. We have selected and are recommending materials grounded in research-based message for teaching reading, writing, speaking, and listening. We've selected differentiated resources to meet the needs of all students, including gifted students, Spanish immersion students, English language learners, struggling readers, special education students, including those in self-contained studies. All of these resources have digital tools that maximize access and provide adaptive, personalized learning experiences. Some highlights of the curriculum from the different levels. At the elementary level, sometimes the question comes up about spelling. There will continue to be spelling taught through Words Their Way, which is a developmental approach to teaching spelling. It's not exactly like the list of spelling words that I grew up with, but it works. Another question that often comes up: in the English Language Arts curriculum includes reading, but it also includes writing, not just the thought process of writing, but at the elementary level, the physical process of writing. And we will continue to teach print, starting in kindergarten, continuing working with print through third grading, using a curriculum called Handwriting Without Tears. That curriculum continues in fourth grade with Persif. Then, we are in the 21st century. Our students have to be able to write by hand. They also have to be able to interact with their computers. So we'll start teaching keyboarding in third grade, and then continue building speed through practice in fourth and fifth grade. Collaborative classroom resources are the foundational resources that have been selected for the classroom K through 5. They provide the foundation for English Language Arts. They are also the resources that will be used in the Spanish immersion Language Arts program. We're working, we've reached out to districts in Omaha and Minnetonka, who are using the collaborative classroom in their Spanish immersion sites, so we're sharing some resources and lesson ideas with them. At the middle school, our curriculum focuses on bridging reading and writing, including narrative, nonfiction, and argument writing. In addition to the curriculum for the English Language Arts classrooms, we have reading intervention tools, including System 44 and Read 180 for struggling readers who are reading more than two years below grade level, and will continue Lit Zone for those reading one to two years below grade level. In addition, for our middle and high school English language learners and special education students, we have selected resources from National Geographic to provide engaging, differentiated content. The high school level, all recommended materials are a combination of online and print resources to support reading comprehension, writing skills, language skills, and vocabulary development. Three of the courses will keep their current print text, but we have purchased and renewed the online access. The way publishers do pricing now, even though we're keeping our print texts, it doesn't save us a great deal, because the online access is primarily what publishers are pricing their products, at least on. But through the online access, our students will have extra supports, including interactive readers. At the high school level, for several years, we've had the FAME program for our struggling readers. With this adoption, we are recommending moving to Pearson's I-LIT program. It's a more updated program, includes some better digital tools to help support those students. The English Language Arts curriculum will continue access to digital tools, including turnitin.com, which helps teachers recognize if students might have perhaps borrowed a little too heavily from some of those online resources they have access to, as well as Noodle Tools, which helps with keeping track of sources and keeping your research all together, and databases for credible embedded information, so that students can learn to recognize good quality information. To deliver this curriculum, there will be professional development, which is a combination of best practices and instruction, as well as orientation to the new materials. The publishers will come to provide a lot of that training and coaching for teachers who are using the new materials, and then our own committee members, instructional coaches, and curriculum coordinators will provide training and coaching on those best practices and instruction. There'll be one to two days in the summer, and then there will be in-service times during the 2017-18 school year. Then, next June, the committees come back together to review the implementation and make recommendations they might have for revision. The cost for this curriculum, out of the general education budget, is about $3.9 million. Special education is another $885,000. Coordinated early intervention services, about $298,000. Sounds like a lot, but when you consider that this is the basic foundation on which all learning is built, it's a very important curriculum. No skill is more crucial to the future of a child or to a democratic and prosperous society than literacy. With that, I would ask that the board would approve the K-12 ELA curriculum adoption.
First, do we have any questions for Anne? I have a request to address the school board. Ms. Bycey? Bless you. Please state your name, your address, and you'll have five minutes.
My name is Mary Sheil Bycey. I live at 7625 West Regina Street here in Sioux Falls. I have grandchildren in the Sioux Falls School District. Mr. President, members of the board, when I saw that we were adopting a new curriculum, I kind of wondered why, to be honest, because the state is in the process of revising the ELA standards, and those new standards, if they're new, will be implemented in the 1920 school year. So I guess I didn't understand spending so much money right now, when in two years, this curriculum might be out of date, because it is aligned with the current standards. And then I got in, and I started looking, and I started perusing the website for the collaborative classroom. And I found it interesting that in all my clicks and different things, and watched videos of the teachers and different people on there, I only heard the word phonics twice. It was all about the social-emotional learning. And then I remembered that ESSA, passed by Congress, required that within our state standards, it be embedded the social-emotional learning, the noncognitive skills be measured. And I don't know how we do that. I've done enough research to know that there really isn't a good scientific way to assess the noncognitive skills by teachers, and I know there'll be professional development, but we're going to be asking teachers to assess and grade noncognitive skills. I do have to step back and say, handwriting without tears, yay! What a good program! I love handwriting without tears. I do have concerns about the digital tools, and will those digital tools be used to assess the noncognitive skills, the social and the emotional skills? I guess I'm asking you, there's not... I don't feel like there's enough science and enough research on this yet to really put our whole district in there. I know ESSA requires it. I would like to think that we... I would like to think that what the board is going to do tonight is not a precursor to what the state is going to do, because if that's true, if what you're doing will align to the state's new standards, and this really has nothing to do with you, it's just a comment, then I'm not sure why the state is going to have four public hearings on the new ELA standards. And I thank you for your service. I thank you for your time. I know it's not appreciated as much as you might like it to be, or I might like it to be, but I'm asking you to please hold off on this for a little while. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments or further discussion? Hearing none.
Have any comments about the state?
Have any comments about the state curriculum? I mean, can we, any concerns of that?
We have, we have been watching and following the, the review of the state's content standards. We also have another scheduled tweak to the English Language Arts curriculum adoption in four years. We come back and review this and address this, just in case there might be changes. It, the collaborative classroom curriculum does talk about social and emotional skills, but that was not the focus that our committee was looking at as they looked at those curriculum resources. So I feel confident that the, if the state does make change, when the state's changes come forward for their curriculum standards review, our materials will still align enough that they will not be out of date or irrelevant.
And just to, I think we all understand this, but make sure the public knows, this is, we review curriculum sort of on a, I mean, on a scheduled basis, and this happens to be when we were reviewing, it had already been scheduled to review as part of our normal process.
That's correct. That's correct. And again, that's why in four years, we have scheduled to come back and revisit it, just because we recognize that things do continue to evolve and change.
And I think in regards to the question maybe about digital resources, I feel like our teachers, majority of them, really utilize their smartboards, and they utilize the Chromebooks and the iPads and, and things like that. And so giving students an option, maybe even, I don't, I don't know the details, but I know we have things that my kids can do at home digitally. And so it kind of takes that learning, not just in that classroom setting, but also, you know, in, in the home as well, and kind of practicing those skills. So I, I'm not one that's in favor of removing textbooks, because I think there's a lot of value in those, but I certainly think that complementary materials that are digital are engaging for kids and give them access in places that they maybe wouldn't have before. And I, the teachers that I've spoke to really enjoy having that variety of, of instruction in their classroom to go to, to keep their kids engaged and interested versus just having a textbook or, or something like that. So I think it's a great, a great resource for teachers to have and utilize with their students in their classrooms.
The materials that we are recommending for adoption are currently available for the public to review in the north side of IPC in the multipurpose room. If you go and review those materials and look through the teacher's guides and look and see how the digital tools do complement what is available in the print resources, there are things that, that it gets into, like media literacy. Certainly, that's one of the things that, that we know is critically important, that our students not only be able to read and understand and be able to evaluate print information, but they understand the variety of information gets, that they get flooded with anytime they're on the computer. So that is another advantage of the digital tools.
Good resources.
Good resources.
Not Wikipedia.
Right.
Any further?
Well, I just, when I look at the fact that, that we've spent 18 months, we've, we've included dozens of parents, we've had input from professionals, we've gone to Omaha, we've gone to Minnetonka to, to evaluate how those school districts, which are, I believe, quite a bit larger than our district, and we've also monitored carefully what the state has been looking at for new standards in 2020. If we're going to look in four years at an additional look and a tweak, then I'm very comfortable that we've done our due diligence, and I have all the confidence in the world in, in our parents and in our professional staff, and I would move approval of the, of the curriculum adoption.
Second. I have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. And that motion carries.
Our second report tonight is an Imagine Learning Reading Intervention Report, also submitted by our Director of Curriculum Instruction, Ann Smith.
Study conducted by the Annie E. Casey Foundation found that a student who cannot read on grade level by third grade is four times less likely to graduate high school on time than a student who reads proficiently by third grade. The Sioux Falls School District is committed to finding creative and innovative ways to improve literacy in the early years and reduce the achievement gap by maximizing time for instruction for struggling students. This report is on a study that we proposed to undertake that will provide deliberate evaluation of an intervention program called Imagine Learning. It's a software program. Four of our schools have received a grant from the South Dakota Department of Education to provide 693 licenses. That means that it would be able to reach 693 students in those four schools. The program is designed for struggling readers, and the grant specifically targets struggling readers in grades K through three. In order to maintain the licenses for the full term of the grant, we must ensure that the identified students use the software at least 20 minutes a day. One of the things that we recognize is that we already have interventions in place in these four schools. The students might have a literacy and action teacher who would meet with them for 30 minutes a day. They might work with an ELL teacher who needs to work with them for 30 minutes a day. They might be involved in CEIS, where they're supposed to meet with a teacher for 30 minutes a day. Then it becomes, when is the student going to have time to be in the classroom and learn regular content instruction? That's what prompted our thinking for, we need to take a look at what's the best intervention so that the students are using their time well. So we propose to form three groups. There would be one group of students who work on Imagine Learning software under the supervision of their classroom teacher, and they receive no additional support from their LIA teacher. There would be those students who work with an LIA teacher but do not use the Imagine Learning software. And there would be those students who use the Imagine Learning software under the supervision of an LIA teacher. We would use the NWEA MAP as a standardized tool, assuming that the map is approved through the budget process and we're able to purchase it. We would come in and measure and compare to see which students are making the greatest gains. And hopefully, we might be able to see for, that there would be some patterns or commonalities. So perhaps Imagine Learning is more effective with groups of students who are third-grade students who read more than a year below grade level. Or maybe it's more effective with ELL students who are reading at a certain level below grade level. That's what we propose to find out with this study, so that then we can make a recommendation for further zeroing in on those interventions that will do the best for our students. In terms of cost for this study, the Imagine Learning software has been provided to us through the grant through July, through June 30th of 2019. So the cost that you see there is just an example of what it would have cost had we have, had we needed to pay for it. The NWEA MAP is included in the FY budget request. It's actually included to do the map district-wide K through six. So again, that's not a cost. However, without a tool like the MAP, we will not be able to complete this study because, or we'll have to find some other standard way of determining whether, which students are performing at which rate. With that, I would ask that you would acknowledge the Imagine Learning Reading Intervention Report.
Any questions?
So the licenses for two years, and so we're going to do these three groups for the first year, and then at that point, would it be to identify the best method and implement the second year?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Did we apply for the grant, or does the state want to test this?
We applied for the grant. The, the schools applied for the grant, seeing it as an opportunity to offer additional services. And then when the grant came in and they started thinking about what it actually would mean to use the software according to the...
So the results are for our own internal decision?
Correct.
I don't owe them to the state. I always get concerned, like, we're doing a pilot and have to spend a lot of resources measuring it to report back to the state, because they should compensate for it, us for that, but we're just...
No, the state, the state is doing their own look at the schools that received the grant to decide if they're going to continue to invest in more Imagine Learning across the state, but that's separate.
So we see it as potential to improve the reading in our, our students, and, and we have a willing grant partner to help us do that, do the licenses.
Yeah.
Great.
Yep.
Any further questions? May I have a motion to acknowledge the Imagine Learning Reading Intervention Report?
I'm moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. All carries.
The next report is our graduation report. But before I give that graduation report, if you don't mind, I'd like to give a shout out to Kate Kay Luli. Kate is my granddaughter of less than three hours.
Woo-hoo!
Yeah.
I'm sure she's watching.
I'm sure she's probably not watching, but I'll send that to her mom, who probably I should be congratulating.
Congratulations.
Yeah. She is in Lincoln, Nebraska. Yeah. So the purpose of this report now wasn't just for me to steal the show for my family. It wa, it is to talk about one of, one very important thing we have with our strategic plan, and that is our, our graduation goal for the year, goals for the upcoming five-year plan. Our, our graduation rate is identified as a priority area within our strategic plan. And when we look at our, all the great things that happen in the school district, you know, we can thump our chest for just a whole lot of things that we have done really, really, really well. But we also, through that strategic plan, have to look at some gaps, and one of those gaps that we identified was our strategic one, was our graduation rate. Our current graduation rate is 80.6%. And I've said this a number of times, when you think of districts our size and of our complexity, and of the districts that are, that are urban or becoming urban, much like we are, an 80.6% graduation rate certainly isn't unheard of. It's just determined by us to be unacceptable for Sioux, for the city of Sioux Falls. So who's responsible for this improvement? As we look at this five-year plan to improve graduation rates, who's responsible? Who's going to take charge of this issue? First and foremost, I would say, we can't do anything with any substance in this area without quality teachers. Secondly, I would say, we have those quality teachers in place. I don't expect our teachers to do any more than what they're doing today. Continue to teach hard every day. Continue to look at students as individuals and give their best effort. I believe we're getting that from them now. I don't anticipate, that's something that needs, that needs to change. However, one of the things that we are really embarking on is looking at the administrator's role in our graduation, in our graduation rate. And one of the things that I think we can do as administrators is take those gaps that students fall through and narrow those gaps. I don't know that we'll ever get to the point where we've eliminated those gaps altogether, but hopefully, we can narrow those gaps. And we've got a plan to do just that. At our building level, one of the things that our, that our principals are charged with is putting together a pyramid of interventions. And that pyramid of interventions can range from 504 status for a student, IEP status for a student, if they need special education services. It might be providing students rides to and from school, if that's appropriate. It might be a suspension. It might be an application for Joe Foss or the President's Academy. It could be any number of things. But this pyramid of interventions is something that we must have in place and that folks need to know at, at the building level, what options are available for our students. One of the other things that we've implemented across the district this year is weekly meetings. And so our principals have put together cohort teams, and these cohort teams vary from building to building in terms of what they look like, but they are made up of principals, assistant principals, athletic directors, counselors, success coordinators, and then it depends on who else might be a part of that team in each building. But the meetings are about 15 minutes in nature, and what they, and what they really accomplish are action and accountability. And as we, as we, as we meet in those meetings, we talk about students. We might talk about teachers, we might talk about classes, but we talk about committing to doing something that week that will help improve our graduation rate. Generally speaking, we're talking about students, and who's going to talk to what students this week to help them either improve their attendance, get in a late paper, go retake a test, any number of things that can help that student either get on track or stay on track for graduation. We're seeing great results from those weekly meetings right now. I go to each high school once a month to sit in on those weekly meetings to, partially to monitor progress, but maybe more importantly, to show that we're very serious and we're, we're going to give our time and then the power of presence at those meetings to, to bring that level of significance and importance to those meetings. The third thing is, in terms of who's responsible, is what can we do at the elementary and middle school to help improve our graduation rate? We talk in our administrative, when our, when our district-wide administrators get together, we talk about how graduation rate manifests itself at the high school, but it's not just a high school issue. It is a K-12 issue, and what can we do at the middle level? What can we do at the elementary level? And I'll give you an example of what, what can happen at the elementary level. Just last Monday, I think it was, a week ago today, Mr. Tulkey and myself and Deanne Conrad were out delivering information for Teacher of the Year finalists. And at one of our elementary buildings, before we walked into the classroom of this Teacher of the Year finalist, I saw outside a sign that said, "Class of 2026." So my point is, just establishing that mindset, that graduation, that is the finish line for your K-12 education. So it's, it's those conversations and that mindset that we're beginning to establish at those levels. So what are our goals? We have, we have three big goals. The first goal is in 2019, to increase our graduation rate by 5%. I was asked today by a member of the media, how did we come to 5% as our, as our goal? Why 5%? And I don't remember all of the reasons and rationale, but I remember this. We wanted to have a goal that was ambitious and one that we had to reach for, but we also wanted to have one that's very attainable. I really believe that 5% by 2019 is very attainable. And when we started the conversation, 2019 was one cycle of high school students. So that's how, that's how we came to establish that particular year and that particular rate. Also, by 2020, we want to make sure that our district-wide completion rate is 94%. We want to make sure that we focus on graduating and graduating with your cohort, but graduating with your cohort isn't, isn't our only goal. We have some students that, for whatever reason, can't get to that finish line with their cohort. As I told the, I met today with our, with our principals, talking about the progress and so forth, one of the things that I said to them is, we want to make sure that our, that our students who can't graduate with their cohort know that we still love them, and we're still going to try to get them to the finish line as well, and that would be part of our, our completion rate of 94%. Also, we wanted to decrease the gap that exists between our free and reduced-price lunch students and those who are not free and reduced-price lunch students, and we want to make sure that that gap, I, I was going to go like this, but I don't want to go like this, because I don't want to bring down this number to reduce the gap. We want to bring this up and reduce the gap that way, and that's our goal. I really think the only way we can achieve our district-wide goal is to really address and make an impact on many of the subgroups that we have in our district that we're looking at. Certainly, the free and reduced-price lunch students is, is one of those groups. So I would finish by telling you, we're making progress. I know that because I'm at the meetings monthly. I also know that because I've met with the principals themselves. I also know that because I've met with the principals themselves to work on just their own professional development in this area. I don't have numbers for you today because we only graduate, we only calculate that graduation rate actually in August, but we should know by June whether or not we're making progress in this area. And I really believe we will. We will not make progress by lowering our standards. We will not make progress by decreasing graduation rates or any artificial manner. We will make progress by keeping the rigor and the same high standards that we have in place right now, but helping fewer and fewer kids fall through those cracks that we know exist. I would stand by for any questions that you have.
Any questions for Dr. Maher?
I think the nice thing is, is that the expectation is set for, like, you talked about the pyramid, but it's not a set pyramid. It really can be determined by the principal at each of the schools, their high schools. And I think each high school has their own environment and their own culture within it. And so what might work at one may not be effective at another. And so it's not a blanket policy or a blanket intervention. It's here's what we have available, what's going to work the best for the students in your building. And those principals and those teachers know their students best. So giving them the option to select those and implement them that will be the most effective, I think, is a great, great part of this whole intervention plan, so.
Right. And I'll give you a case in point today. You're exactly right. There are some tremendous differences, actually, from building to building on what interventions they have in place. There are also some similarities, but we want to encourage our principals to have some sort of entrepreneurial spirit to get those kids to the finish line. The only things that we've set in stone are, number one, you have to improve, and number two, you can't reduce the rigor in order to improve.
Any other questions? Hearing none. May I have a motion to acknowledge the strategies used by the high schools to support students who are at risk of not graduating with their four-year cohort? So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Todd, legislative wrap-up.
The main run of the 2017 legislative session is over. Schools received, ended on Friday. Schools received a 0.3% increase in general state aid and 0.3% increase in special education. Additionally, the district tracked 44 other bills, of which seven were considered key bills. Of those key bills, the district supported one and opposed five, and all of those bills failed to pass. The seventh bill, House Bill 1170, was submitted to amend the Conflict of Interest Law that was passed by last year's legislature. The district, as you know, the district proposed several amendments to House Bill 1170. Most of these amendments were substantially adopted, and the bill was passed. Overall, the district's position is that the amended HB 1170 improves the law that was passed last year. Regarding the 0.3% increase in state aid, this was prescribed by the longstanding index factor statute that calls for an annual increase of 3% inflation, whichever is less. While virtually all South Dakota school districts have long contended that this prescribed increase is not adequate to keep up the cost of delivering a quality education, this year the legislature faced a cut in its overall general fund budget, and to its credit, still managed to increase the per-student allocation, albeit by that small amount, was appreciated. However, looking at education funding over the long term, after last year's historic increase that was funded by a half-cent increase in the sales tax fund, state aid will be 33.3% of the state's general fund budget next year. This is up from an all-time low, at least since the formula was overhauled in 1998, of 28.9%, which happened in FY '16. It is the same percent of the budget as it was in FY '10. For comparative purposes, in FY '98, state aid was 38.9% of the state's general fund budget. Notwithstanding the FY '18 budget, typically, the rest of the state's budget increases at a rate that substantially outpaces the increase in state aid. As part of the package that increased state aid last year, last year, a year ago, the legislature substantially limited future increases in school districts' capital outlay funds and also rolled the pension fund into the general fund. For Sioux Falls, in just one year, the growth in those funds has been slowed by over $1 million. That's approximately 3% of those funds. In the past, school districts have relied on growth in those two funds to partially offset limited growth in the state aid formula. Since this option is no longer available to most districts because of the limited growth in those funds, the legislature will have to be more vigilant to ensure that growth in the state aid formula keeps up with the more realistic cost of doing business. And it's our position that since over 80% of school districts' general fund expenses are salaries and benefits, a more realistic per-student growth index would be the growth in the state's salaries and benefits per their full-time equivalents. It's just a suggestion. Anyway, like I said earlier, it's really appreciated. The legislature did cut the overall general fund budget, but did manage to find the statutory increase for school districts of 0.3%. We would recommend that you acknowledge the report on the 2017 legislation as presented.
Any questions for Todd?
Well, not, I'll go ahead. Not a question. And, I mean, I know we all feel a lot safer because they improved 1170, that our school boards aren't absconding with funds. I know I'll sleep better knowing that. I still question whether a 0.3% increase, and I appreciate...
Point 0.3?
Oh, excuse me, 0.03. And I appreciate that they did that on a down year. I have a hard time saying that I think that they did any favors for us. They certainly could have reduced what we got, but I'm not in a frame of mind to say I think they really did us a favor by not cutting us. I guess as hard as our employees work, as hard as all of our staff, teachers, every support staff that we have, we're going to have a difficult time treating those people the way I want to treat them, and I think we could have done better over a longer period of time, so I won't say anymore.
No, just thanks, Todd, to you and the team for keeping up with this on a daily basis and always letting the board know where we stand. You know, as far as these bills, I know they come fast and furious, especially at the end of the session, so I guess I'm the same mindset of Kent on the 0.3%. It puts us in another difficult situation from a budget perspective when, you know, to fund our teachers' achievements and our salary schedule, it's going to take, you know, 2.7%, and we're getting 0.3%. So, you know, we'll be spending into the fund balance again this next year just to keep our teachers at the same level, basically, and recognize that achievement that they deserve, whether they're going on for further education or just moving across the salary schedule. So, but we'll see that in the coming weeks here as we work through the budget session, but, you know, that's, I think it's going to be another challenging budget cycle. Yeah, that's for sure. Any other comments? May I please have a motion to acknowledge the report on the 2017 legislation as presented?
I move. Second.
Any further discussion? Thanks again, Todd. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And that carries. Kate, you want to help me with the second reading of Policy ICA?
Help you or do them?
Or do it.
Making sure. We've got item 11 on the agenda, second reading of Policy ICA, school calendar. We reviewed this policy, proposed changes, update language to allow the school board to consider all calendar options. We posted this for public review for the first reading on the school district's website, and no comments are received. So I move to approve the second reading of Policy ICA, school calendar.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That carries the second reading.
All right, and we've got several policies that I'm going to read off. Again, they were up for review, and no changes were recommended to any of them, but I'll go ahead and read them off. GCRD, tutoring or services for pay. GCS, professional research and publishing. IIB, class size. IJNBD and its accompanying regulation, virtual online courses. IKB and its accompanying regulation, homework. IKC and its accompanying regulation, calculation of GPA and class rank. KJA, relations with booster and other parent guardian organizations. And KL, relations with other governmental authorities. And so because no changes were recommended, I move to approve the review revision of the said policies and accompanying regulations.
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That carries. Thanks, Kate.
I move that we go into executive session per South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-24.